Well, I was telling you, thanks for coming. But it is great, but great to have a nice crowd and I know it's fun for us to recognize some of you. So we'll start with the roll call.
Clark?
Here.
Eamon?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament? Mayor Heinitz?
Here. So we have quite an agenda tonight. Look for approval of the agenda.
Second.
A motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have minutes from the July 15 briefing meeting, the July 19 regular meeting, and the July 26 special budget meeting.
Both to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Claims are on page 11 and 12. I don't know if there's any there that you would like to review. Any questions there?
Both to approve, mayor.
We have a motion, any second to approve the claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consent agenda. Is there any? As I was gonna say, is there anything there? Moving on to visitors, anyone that has a public comment that they would like to make, we would entertain those thoughts at this point in time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Am I good? Alright. So I'm a visitor. My name is Emmett Reisstrafer. I reside at 915 South Fourth Avenue in Sioux Falls. And it's nice to be back in Brandon. Used to play sports here when I was growing up. I'm here tonight because you've got medical cannabis on the agenda, and I won't be able to stick around unfortunately. I'm driving to T because they're doing an ordinance. And basically, I've been going around to all the cities and counties because I've been in the industry for close to 10 years. After graduating, I moved away. I worked in Denver, Colorado, and then Las Vegas, Nevada, as a general manager of a grow facility and then a manufacturing facility. And then I went on to do consulting and lobbied up in Pierre this year and really just engaged in the process. You know, however I can be involved, my goal here in Brandon is not to lobby you and to say, you know, how to write your ordinances. I just want to be a resource and to be a face to associate with the industry. I'll send a follow-up email later tonight or tomorrow morning, so you've got my contact info. But just a couple of things I've done is I've done presentations before to city councils, as well as state lawmakers, just to show you kind of the ins and outs of the facilities, the ways that we track inventory. We expect in South Dakota to have a similar requirement that we have in all the states where our inventory is tracked in real time, where state regulators can access our inventory, and then even local authorities, if needed, can have access and that sort of thing. Security, safety, worker safety, you name it. I'm your guy to talk about all of that stuff. And just want to be a good neighbor if we do go into business here in Brandon. My company, I can't say today that, you know, we will or will not, but we just want to engage you all. Take a look at the opportunities, you know, when you pass an ordinance and see if there is a good opportunity to do business and be a good neighbor. But other than that, that's who I am. Again, Emmett Reisstrafer from Sioux Falls. My company is called Crosswinds Cannabis. I'm involved in the cultivation and manufacturing, but I work closely with retailers as well. And yeah, happy to answer any questions. I know it's just public comment right now, so maybe there'll be another day I can come back. And yeah, so that's who I am, and just thank you for your time and good luck as you tread into this new territory. Personally, I don't think there's anything to be scared of, but I understand that sometimes there's mystery around the unknown. And that was my goal, I'm just being proactive tonight, so I can be a resource to you if you have any questions.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for your time.
We're working hard to understand.
Absolutely.
Obviously want to do it right.
Yep.
That's the key.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emmett. Any other comments?
Already on? Okay. Hi, I'm Sandy Elifson, 1102 North Chestnut Avenue outside of Brandon. And I would just like to ask the council to be a good neighbor on their part. The water tower is right across from our farming operation. I know Brandon has weed ordinances on their properties to try to keep things looking nice. And hopefully somebody from the council or the city would be able to go out and see what that property looks like because it's full of tall-growing sunflowers all around the perimeter and in the ditches and so on and so forth. And I think a little attention somehow, some way, maybe it's not the contractor, but we'd appreciate that. We do diligence with the county ordinance as far as we're concerned on our farming operation, and we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Sandy.
Mayor, Council, I did contact the contractor today, and they are gonna work on spring, not this week.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask, is, I'm assuming that's our responsibility through the contractor to get that taken care of. Thank you, Sandy, for bringing that to our attention. Any other? Yes.
Hello, everyone. Now, can you hear me? Alright, thank you. I'm Tom Mulstein, 201 South Augusta Avenue. I also own Brandon Pharmacy at 116 East Holly Boulevard. So I haven't really even got my thoughts together yet on what I'm gonna talk about, but I'm just gonna keep talking until someone tackles me, so prepare, so.
I could've used you about 20 years ago.
So, so as you, as you know from the past, I'm a big proponent of the medical marijuana. And I see that it's on, on the, the, today. So the ordinances I've looked at for the sample ordinances from the other cities, boy, they seemed restrictive. I want to just give you just a little bit of a story. As you know, my wife has chronic pain, which is one of the main reasons I'm really into this. We went to the dispensary in Flandrew. And very nice dispensary in the, in the inside. The outside building is pretty plain, but inside, they did a really good job on the inside. They didn't have a lot of product there, but we did ask for a recommendation of what my wife should get. And just in two weeks, now I'm the first to admit that two weeks of one person is not a good sample size. But at least from my point of view, we, my wife's been battling this for many, many, many years. And then nothing seems to help. In just the last couple of weeks, she's been able to decrease her pain pill usage by about 40 to 60, or 40 to 50 percent. So then that in turn also has a better quality of life. She's had less side effects, especially if you're taking pain meds a lot. There's a lot of side effects that go along with that, GI type issues and things. So if you don't know anybody who can benefit from this, there's an example. At least now you know one person, and this is who we're talking about. Just keep in mind that 70 percent of people voted for this. 70 percent. It is the least controversial, controversial issue that's out there. And I would like to think that if the other 30 percent, if I had them all in a room and we, we got to talk for a couple hours about answering all their questions and issues, I think we could get it up a lot higher than 70, 70 percent. But that's, you know, just theory. But yes, you're gonna be talking about this in the future. I guess the only thing I want to tell you about, the dispensary gets a lot of talk. Okay, dispensaries, whatever. There are many other businesses that are potential here too. The cultivation facility, manufacturing facility, testing facility, transport businesses, security issues, security-type businesses. We, I would hope that we would, if other places are gonna be super restrictive, we look at being a leader in it, especially, say, the cultivation part of it. Those are not stoner hippies that are in a greenhouse. These are huge, expensive, professional buildings with lots of expensive equipment and technology. If you ever get a chance to go take a tour of one, which I have, but also if you even just look it up on YouTube, this is, if you have an idea in your head that it's just, you know, people in a greenhouse, it is not. It is a very sophisticated operation. And something like that, I would have no problem with it being, especially in the industrial, you know, over in the industrial park. And if you bring one of those very expensive places to town, then perhaps the other businesses will follow as well. Because the manufacturing, they need to get their product from someone, and you have to, can't mail it or anything. So it would make sense that they set up shop next door. The testing facility needs to be near. And if, I've seen Sioux Falls, it seems to be pretty restrictive too. And they're gonna want to put all these things somewhere near the, all the people in South Dakota, which would be near Sioux Falls. So we have an opportunity to really use the land, our, the interstate, the proximity to Sioux Falls, and use it to our advantage to really take advantage of an opportunity that we potentially have here. Anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and, you know, if you have any questions for me in the later part of the meeting, feel free. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Stuart Peschel. I live at 212 East Tabor Court. I'm also the president of the Brandon Valley Baseball Association. As many of you know, last week, we held the South Dakota Class A Legion State Tournament in Brandon. This was an eight-team, five-day tournament that brought in a combined tourney attendance of 5,106 people. So that was our five-day attendance. I believe that people were stunned and shocked at how great our facility looked when they walked into the park. Throughout the weekend, we consistently heard how the road was awesome that you guys did from the pool forward. The, you know, I think that we won with that. I also think that we didn't hear a thing about the parking lot, so we won with that as well, since nobody made a comment about the parking lot. But what I'm really here for today is just to let you guys know, we couldn't have pulled it off without our volunteers, and we certainly couldn't have pulled it off without the help of the city. I've been in the past pretty hard on Devon and his crew, and I gotta say, for this tournament, they stepped up, and they, they really came out as winners with this, this whole thing. So that whole Parks Department and Devon were great to work with. And so, you know, I've given them a hard time in the past, so I only think it's right that I come and give them some kudos as well. So if you could relay that to them, we would greatly appreciate that. I guess I encourage, I encourage you guys to take a look at the BVBA Facebook page. There's lots of reviews up there from people. We've received a lot of emails about how good the tournament was, and I think that we, along with the city, set a new standard for what baseball tournaments, or state tournaments in South Dakota are gonna look like. Chris?
Yeah, I'll jump in quick. I'm Chris Brown. I'm also a co-chair with Stuart on the tournament. I live at 300 East Meadowlar Court. As Stuart said, we couldn't have done it without our volunteers. We couldn't have done it without you guys. So we appreciate everything the city did for us. And, you know, one of our mottos when we built the field was obviously if you build it, they will come, and they have. This is the fourth state tournament we've hosted. This was by far the highest-profile tournament we've hosted. And I think, you know, I heard from a town member who was up in Brookings at a member guest, and he pointed at the screen and he said, "That's Brandon, South Dakota." And everybody in Brookings said, "Wow." So, I mean, the field showed great, the facility showed great, and our people did unbelievably awesome. As Stuart said, please go to our Facebook page. We have so many good reviews from fans, umpires, from everybody at the job we did as a community in pulling off that tournament. And from that, we've already heard that the Legion Commission wants us to show up in Pierre in January to rebid it. So it's going to Rapid City next year, but hopefully nobody else will show up, and maybe that tournament will be back in Brandon in two years. We also had the state amateur baseball commissioner, president, come to us at the concession stand and say this would be a wonderful facility to host the amateur tournament. And that's a 13-day event that brings thousands of people to the community. So I think, you know, like Stuart said, I mean, it was a phenomenal weekend. We wish our team would've maybe won another game or two, but that's baseball. But I think as a whole, our whole community showed extremely, extremely well. And I'll leave you with one final thing. I was talking to a lady from Rapid City who said she'd never been in Brandon before. She'd never been here. She said, "I had no reason to come here. When I come east, I go to Sioux Falls, and then I keep on driving." And she said, "From what I've seen this weekend, I now have a reason to stop in Brandon, South Dakota." So I thought that was pretty cool to hear from somebody who's never been in our community before and enjoyed her time here at our businesses and at our facility. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Stuart and Chris, don't sell yourselves short. We appreciate your leadership. It takes somebody to spearhead any kind of, kind of an activity like this, and you two were above and beyond. And I also would thank the community of Brandon, and Valley. We had over 200 people volunteer. And I was out there several days, and everything was, was just really well-done, so we appreciate that. Is this the time when I read the proclamation? This was my first one, so this is pretty special to me. Whereas the Brandon Valley Association hosted the South Dakota Class A Senior American Legion Baseball Tournament on July 23 through 27, 2021. And whereas the tournament took countless volunteer hours by members of the Brandon Valley Baseball Association to plan for the tournament, and whereas hundreds of community volunteers helped to make the tournament a success, therefore I, Jim Heinitz, Mayor of Brandon, South Dakota, and on behalf of the city of Brandon, want to thank the Brandon Valley Baseball Association for the professional and meticulous way in which the South Dakota State A, Senior Legion Baseball Tournament at First National Field was run last week. The attention to detail in all aspects led to a very fun and safe five days at the ballpark. So many great comments on the field and in general, the whole Aspen Park complex. We also extend a great thanks to the over 200 volunteers from the communities of Brandon and Valley Springs that worked very hard to make sure fans enjoyed the games. Also, a big thanks to the Parks Department for ensuring that the fields were in great shape. Every aspect of the five days reflected extremely well on the city of Brandon. Other than the mayor's imperfect first pitch, everything else was perfect. Well done, all. Signed, Jim Heinitz, Mayor. So. Do we give them?
Well, Mayor, if they're coming back in two years, you're gonna have to practice up a little.
Yeah.
No guarantees. I think I lost my rope to their cuff somewhere.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I told Chris, Stu, I wasn't sure if I was the cutoff man or the pitcher, so I took, I bounced it in. They weren't buying that, so. Well, that was fun, and that was really a whole, as I said in the proclamation, what a, what a great reflection on this whole community. The city, the parks, Devon was above and beyond, so really, really excited to go through. Public hearing, is there anything else there?
Nope.
Old business. Anything? Pardon?
Is there any more public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was, were there any others? Good. Alright, thank you. We'll close that and move on to old business.
No old business.
Okay, we'll move on to standing committee reports. The golf course.
Hire Alicia King for lounge beverage cart, beverage cart at the golf course.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the hiring of Ms. Tingle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Andrew, it seems like, again, as I drive by every day, play is exceptional. And I'm sure you still have some outings going on and things like that, but it looks good. A little rain last week certainly didn't, didn't hurt. Of course, looked really good. Parks and Rec, Parks report is on page 14 and 15 for you to look at. If there's any question there. The second item is donation of dasher boards to Brandon Valley Hockey Association.
Correct. The city of Sioux Falls has dasher boards coming out of the Premier Center. They have offered to donate them to us, and then we would in turn donate those to the Brandon Valley Hockey Association.
Do we have to approve the resolution?
Yep, Resolution 1521.
I would make that motion.
A motion, second to approve Resolution 1521. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a request on page 18 for alcohol in McCarty Park on August 9. Is this the?
Yeah, this one's for the Boba Jeep Club.
You might want to talk to the police department, see what we need to do.
That's the bathroom?
Yeah. We did reserve the shelter. We tried to have this event last month, but it was rained out, so we'll try it again.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, second to approve the request at McCarty Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have Brandon area, T area Soccer Association requests for soccer tournament at McCarty Park.
Yep, they had one earlier this spring. They'd like to have another one September 24 through the 26.
Brian, just to make sure, so going forward, though, we are gonna have discussions like later on about fees or if we're gonna charge this, right?
Correct, yep. We're redoing or in the process of redoing all of our MOUs or agreements with the athletic associations. Those are all expiring, I think, at the end of this year. So we'll address in there some of these tournaments that are taking place.
Yeah, I would just, especially when out-of-town ones, it's nice they're coming here, but using our facilities, something associated. So you think by like next soccer season and like spring, we would have something?
I would estimate we'll have something probably for you in January.
Well, they're estimating 3,000 people coming and going to Brandon.
Yep, it's usually a pretty good-sized one. I drive by McCarty Road at certain, in between games, it's pretty backed up.
Yeah.
They did, they did come to Park Board, so I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the use of the field. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public safety. Police report, if there's anything there. You have a fire department report in front of you. I don't know if there's any questions there. And then third is sample medical cannabis ordinances, which we have started debating on. I've been to several I am 26 meetings, and, and this is a, it, I like the way Tom put it. It's the controversy wasn't in the vote, the controversy is how, how you do this. And I think the one thing that we have visited about is we want to, we just want to do it right. We want to make sure that, that we are fair with it to all sides. Because I think, I think there's a fairness issue with people voting on something that you, you almost can defeat the vote if you're not careful. And so we've, we've started on this, and, and obviously October 4, I believe, is the, a date to start. So we've, we've got some work to do, and I'm not sure where we want to start tonight, Brian.
Really, nothing to do tonight, other than, like I said at the briefing meeting, please review those draft ordinances. If you like something in one, let us know, or let me know. If you don't like something in there, let me know. Lisa is working on a draft ordinance for us. So I think the, a couple of items. One, what do you want to allow in town? I mean, like they talked about dispensaries, testing, grow operation, manufacturing, or, or whatever they do. So what do you want to do there? How many of whatever, where there's dispensaries? Do you want to base it on something? Do you want to, you know, all of the liquor stuff in the state is based upon population. So the more population you have, the more dispenser, liquor licenses you have. We need to talk about what type of fee or how much of a fee, how to determine that fee for both the license and application fee. You'll notice in a couple of those ordinances, they'll refund back half of their application fee if the state does not approve their license. Because it's a two-step process, is my understanding. We approve a license, and then it goes to the state for the state approval. So just because somebody gets a license from us doesn't mean they get to open up a facility here in town if the state declines it.
Is there a fee for us and a fee for the state, or is it just a fee?
Both.
And is the state fee, are they suggesting 5,000?
Yeah, that's what it, in that memo from Yvonne Taylor at the league, they're, they're looking at 5,000. So those are the things that we need to take a look at. You know, we'll probably need to amend some of the zoning codes depending on where we want things to go. Oh, and how far, what distance do you want at particular dispensaries? I would, I would look at, looking at the use from a purely zoning standpoint, the grow operation and manufacturing would certainly take place in the industrial park. It wouldn't, it wouldn't take place in the general business or a central business district. But a dispensary testing activity could probably function in either of those two. Do you want to look at distances from, if you look at the other ones, typically looking at churches, parks, schools, et cetera? I gave you a couple of maps, one at 300 feet from property lines, one at 1,000 feet from property lines. Now, they're circles, and most of those properties are rectangular, so those are estimated distances. If you look at that 1,000 feet from property lines, there's really no place in town, in the general business or the central business district, that a dispensary or testing facility could locate. So.
On that, I have one question. And on page 25, it's stating here that there's a state requirement of 1,000 feet from schools? Is that, is that what I'm reading here? The 2C exemption. Pardon?
It's 1,000 feet from schools.
That is a requirement from the state.
Cannot be less than 1,000 feet from a public-private school existing before the date of the cannabis dispensary application.
If the regulations get adopted that way. I mean, they're still draft regulations, so until they're in effect, we don't know. But that's the recommendation that's right now.
Are this still a draft from the state as well, so they don't have a final?
Right, theirs, we expect theirs will be final October 5. And that's why we're, we're needing to get ours done, so ours are done, and just getting, there aren't gonna be any changes. I haven't heard that there's gonna be any changes there, but if we don't get ours done and they go in effect, then that's something that's up for next day. And I would just, as long as I have a microphone real quick.
Turn your mic.
As long as I have the microphone. You know, under eight, seven of our ordinances, there's some, what we call sensitive use, sensitive zones, churches, daycares, licensed places, things like that. We have five hundred feet, a hundred, a thousand feet from each other, so that's something maybe if you guys want to look at as well, is when we use our adult uses, the adult movie theaters, the adult stores, we already zone for some of those things with a five hundred feet from certain places, like the churches, and so we kind of maybe have a template set up that you can think about. We don't have to have it exactly the same for the dispensary or the testing facility or whatever the case may be, but we do have some history of what we've looked at as to a, what we might not want certain things next to, such as a licensed daycare and stuff like that.
Well, if they're saying a thousand feet, can we go less?
Well, I, well, we have licensed daycares, and we're not talking about just schools, but parks and licensed daycares, and nursing homes. I mean, you can have, zone it away from certain things, so not just schools, but there are other things.
But I mean, if we, if they say a thousand for a school, do we have to follow what the state says?
We would have to follow what the state says for that, that one, but then we could still decide for, it has to be a thousand feet from schools, but five hundred feet from other things, for example.
Okay, so Lisa, we could do that. We're, right now, we have to write it as a thousand feet from schools, but from churches, we can keep at three hundred or five hundred.
Right.
The other thing too.
And, and let me interject real quick. We can do something where we say, you know, maybe you can do it, but you got to give the conditional use permit to be three hundred feet from a church, and then you got to go through a little more regulation.
Then we do, so then the, like, the community or the residents around there would have a, be able to come in and have, and public input, right, if it's conditional use?
I would anticipate, at least on the zoning code side of things, we treat them very similar to alcohol licenses. All alcohol licenses in the city have to be a conditional use permit.
On sale.
So, or on sale?
On sale, and you do.
So that way, it gives planning and zoning another look to say, okay, what's, what's in the area, what can we do to minimize the impact on the neighborhood?
And you can do, like, the dispensaries in a certain area, and the, the testing and manufacturing, just in heavy industrial if you want. So we could just zone those other three into heavy industrial, light industrial, and the dispensaries a thousand feet from something. So you, you don't have to treat them all the same. If you want, I know a lot of people aren't doing anything other than the dispensary. You have to have a dispensary, you can't, you have to at least one. The other ones you don't have to have, but if you're going to have them, you can put those in, for example, the industrial area.
So Lisa, not that matters, but I read, I'm reading about Sioux Falls, and are they talking about a thousand feet from, for everything? I mean, they were sort of talking that the only place they could have it was out by the airport or something.
So nothing's been published in Sioux Falls, and on Friday, the city council members started providing a lot of input, so there's a lot of different opinions in terms of what they're going to do, because they don't have anything that's out there for a first reading They will have a distance. Will they have anything besides a dispensary? That's to be determined. No.
Well, I know one of the things they've talked a lot about at these meetings is some term, some type of uniformity, but yet, I mean, I, I think we have to do what's best for the people of Brandon, and what we think is safe, and so I guess we'll just continue to, to work on it.
I'll just chime in and I.
I'm sorry, I, I'm in contact with the area state attorneys and the area state's attorneys that are working on this, and so I'd certainly get in dialogue.
But, well, we're going to need your help.
Definitely. I just wanted to add or encourage us to consider these radiuses being much smaller than Sioux Falls, because we just don't have anything left, and A, we want to bring business here, and B, we don't want to send these dispensaries off into little side streets or behind other businesses. I mean, we want them to be credible, reputable businesses that can be patrolled and out in the open, so that's where I'm, I'm at on it. And I really liked what Tom Willstein talked about with, with trying to draw some of these credible businesses out to our industrial park. I think that that's a phenomenal idea, so I hope we don't get so restrictive on this that we make it where we can't attract some of these businesses.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna throw out something here. As far as the dispensaries, I look at the dispensaries and, and the soon follow, the recreational, it's being two different, two different things. You know, and I'm not a person that's been a real big proponent for, for any of this, but the voters have voted, and I look at the dispensaries probably the same way as I might look at a drugstore or a pharmacy, and, you know, I could, I could maybe see doing something as far as distances from schools. I have a hard time going beyond that, because if we start talking about churches and parks and things like that, you're absolutely right, it becomes really restrictive. Now, when conversation comes around to recreational, my, my tone might change on that, because that's a, that's a different, that's a different animal right there. But as far as the dispensaries, I can see maybe doing some restriction as far as the schools, especially if the state mandates of churches, parks, daycares, and things like that. I guess I don't, personally, I don't see the need, so I just wanted to go on the record.
Well, yes, good. Won't the dispensaries be, I mean, obviously, the recreational, it sounds like is going to happen, right?
Yeah, we're, we're still waiting on the, we're still waiting on the court.
Yeah, I know. But let's say it does. I mean, one dispensary will have both medical and, and recreational, or not?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? Okay.
So will there be a separate ordinance for recreational?
I think there'll be separate registered rules for recreational, and then we would adopt separate ordinances as well for recreational. This is not, what we're working on is medical cannabis dispensaries right now.
Okay, so, because I just, I thought the medical, they could sell recreational, they could do both, and you're saying they can't? If you, if you decide to go to, we don't know yet. Okay, and then this is the other thing, because I don't, I don't know much about this. So if we do have like a growth plant up there or in the industrial park, do they also like sell it from there too, like a dispensary in there? Or is it just mainly growing, and then it would go someplace else for, in a dispensary?
Right, you can't operate a dispensary in one of the, the growth facilities, that's, you can regulate that out.
And do we know if the state's allowing growth facilities, or are they just having it? Because I thought, like, there's some states that you only can, there's only like a certain amount of growth facilities, and the state regulates how many there is, or is it not? I mean, it, we can.
We can have, they're, they're going to regulate the manufacturing and the testing facilities and the cultivation. There are regulations out there for them.
But they're not just saying one, one point in the state, and that has to go for everyone?
Right, right. So we can have the cultivation, the manufacturing, the testing facilities if we want.
Yeah.
But we don't have to. They're requiring a dispensary, but not necessarily the other three within the city. So if you choose, you can have all four. You could have a dispensary and one of the other three, or all three, so. And typically, you don't have, you don't.
So many questions about cultivation of it. I mean, I don't know how many people or how big these are, and how many people they would employ, and would it be good, you know, business? I, I don't, I don't know. It's hard to know. How big are they? Anybody have any idea?
Well, I have lots of thoughts and opinions, but from that aspect, as a member of the Development Foundation, we have land to sell to cultivators and manufacturers and testers.
Are these indoor?
All of them, yes.
Yes.
Yes. If you wanted to grow outside in California, you can get away with it, but in South Dakota, we only have a short growing cycle.
That's true.
So you can grow more inside. Now, they're very expensive facilities. Tom has told me about one that he saw, I mean, the way that they have to build them to get all the harvest out of them, they're, they're not cheap.
Are they like a greenhouse?
No, no, they're all encapsulated buildings with grow lights, with, with watering systems, with highly educated people working inside of them. These are the kind of people that would probably get trained at SDSU once this, right? I mean, that's going to be an ag business, just like corn or soybeans. I guess from my perspective, I would like to see this sort of mere something like we already have in place for our alcohol sales. I think we already have a template for how we sell alcohol in the city, and whether they're allowed.
Talking about recreational?
Both. I mean, because to be very honest, you can consume alcohol in a bar, you can't consume cannabis in a dispensary. So it's sort of like when we have a liquor store, you're not, you can't consume liquor in a liquor store. So why would we be more restrictive on a, on a cannabis distillery, or a, whatever they're called, those things that you buy? I just, I, I don't, I guess I don't have as much reservation about allowing it as, as some might, so I think that's it for now.
Yeah, well, Brian, I, I guess that's, I think for tonight, we're just looking to just some clarity, but.
Just throw it out there, take a look. Like I said, if you see, as you read through those, if you like something, let us know. If you don't like something, let us know, and then we can incorporate it in the first draft, which should be at the next council meeting.
Can I do one more last thing? I think, because I think we talked about before on Thursday, we probably are, probably not going to cap it, right? Because we're just too small to say, you know, I mean, with the feat of how many that we're saying are coming, dispensaries can come in. Then I, I read that Lincoln County is looking at fifty thousand for a license fee and not the five thousand, so is it something where we could make it a little higher? Like, if we're not going to cap, I'm just thinking, our liquor license is what, fifty, sixty thousand?
Six dollars per capita.
Okay. If, I mean, I, that would be one thing I would have the council think about too, is if, go a little bit higher than five thousand.
And that, that is the liquor license where you consume onsite. The liquor license for off-sale is?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Oh, that's what you're talking about there.
Which we're looking at changing on sale, or off sale, like, we're going to discuss too.
Are there, Brian, or maybe Lisa, are there fees for, are the dispensaries a five thousand dollar fee? How about the cultivation? Are they licensed also, or is that?
Everything's licensed, yeah.
Same?
Yep.
So to speak.
Yep. I haven't seen anybody say it's going to be five thousand for the dispensary and ten thousand for the cultivation, or vice versa. You know, the application fee, I think, is the, it might, I mean, that's another thing to think about, is the application fee can be, is it going to be more work to do the licensing of cultivation? I don't know.
Sure.
Versus dispensary, and so you could set one at something and one at something else.
Okay.
Or all the same.
So if you're a brewery or a distillery, who, who inspects those? Is that the ATF? Or is that the state body that inspects those?
I think it'd be the state.
It'd be the state. The brew, all the breweries, necessarily, these applications go through the state. That's why I would say it'd be the state.
But then somebody has to go in and make sure they're actually making what they're saying they're making, right?
I would, I would think it'd be very similar to a slaughter plant, you know, or a locker plant. Somebody from the state or the county health department's going to stop in and make sure everything's meeting regulations.
So my thought is the thousand is too far, so I would say either five hundred or three hundred. I, I don't have a concern if we want to allow the cultivation, all those other choices, the testing and whatever the third one was. The voters voted, doesn't mean that we have to agree with it, but they voted, so I, I'm okay with that.
I have a quick question, sorry. The cultivation, can we have as many as we want, or is it just like, or do we could just decide saying we want one company in industrial park, or can we have two, three? Like, how, we can, that's up to us.
I don't recall there's anything that says you can only have a certain number of those. The, what I recall is you have to have one dispensary, it's up to you on more, up to you on the others.
Okay.
So they're only regulating to that extent. And I think you do need to keep in mind, when, when we're defining cannabis in here, we're not saying it's for medical reasons, we're saying it's for dispensing. So when we're zoning, I'm just thinking through, and I haven't, haven't thought of this yet, I mean, are we changing this to be just for a prescription in our definitions, because we want to zone something different if it's going to be recreational later, as opposed to a dispensary is a dispensary, and you can get recreational, medical, and we're going to keep all of that? So if you're thinking you want to later be more restrictive in your zoning and further away from some of the other places, there might be reasons to, but yeah, we'll have to draft it a little bit differently then, which is fine.
We're going to be more restrictive and always pull back if we cover it too much.
Yes. It's hard to go the other way around, because once you, yeah.
I have a question for Tom, because obviously he might know something about this. In Colorado, the medical dispensaries are separate from the recreational.
Usually, the only one, the only way I've ever seen it, which there's probably, you know, exception to the rule, is a recreational place that has medical to the side. I don't know, especially in those places where recreational is available, medical just, you wouldn't survive on medical only. You'd have recreational and then medical off to the side. So it's like a separate inventory that you have to keep because of tax reasons and stuff, so.
Yeah, and that might, that might change things for me.
Yeah.
I think it would be impossible to not be together, so to speak. I can't see somebody making it.
Especially if it's medical, I said this kind of last time I was here, but if it's medical only, if recreational doesn't, which whoever said that they think medical's going to go, or recreational's going to go through, that, great, but I'm kind of leaning the other way, I'm guessing it's not going to go through, but if it's medical only, you'll be lucky if one dispensary can make it here. I mean, it's just, there's not enough people to, to keep the doors open. So you can zone for ten that could come here, but they're not going to make it, so I guess, like capitalism, take its toll. Recreational's a whole different ballgame, that's a whole different thing. I would, something I was thinking, there's cities who have owned their own liquor store. If recreational came around, the city of Brandon should own their own dispensary. Like, not kidding, that would be half the tax revenue that you currently make in that, on our border city, but that's for another discussion.
I would say the meetings in Sioux Falls that I went to, they really cautioned us that, I mean, they feel like the recreational is going to, you know, come. I mean, how, how do you know?
It's going to come eventually. I mean, that's a good one.
So there was some caution there, that whatever you do for medical, you better be ready to, for the recreational, to follow.
Yep.
To Lisa's point, tough to change the rules after the game started.
Yeah, and the same point, if you're, if you're going forward with medical only, and you know, let's say it didn't even happen this year, it happens in four years, then you can, and recreational comes in. If you're in that medical place, you know, doing your thing, if the rules you make for recreational don't work in your facility, your well-run business is now going to be put out, because someone who has enough money to, you know, start a recreational on the interstate or whatever, in the new area, is, is going to put you out, so.
I, I have another question for you, Tom. Actually, so if I was going to go buy liquor of any, any sort, I would walk into a liquor store, the door would be open, the shelves would be in front of me, I would peruse the shelves, I would be able to buy and take out whatever I wanted. So can you just explain to them what the inside of a dispensary would look like?
The one in Flandrew had three different bays. They had the till area with a glass partition that had the products that were available underneath the glass partition, and then you talked to them about what you wanted, and then they kind of pointed to the things that, the different options, which again, there weren't very much, because they sold out, but, so they, they just, they each had their own separate little display case of what they showed you, and then you was like, oh, this would be good, and this, and then they would get it from the back and then come ring you up, they put like prescription labels on it and stuff, and sent you on your way. But, so that's one way, there, there's apparently a few different ways of doing it. You can do it that way, you can do it like where, like, each person has their own, well, anyway, that's, that's what they had in Flandrew, and it seemed to work really ni, they had a really nice setup, it was, it was, it was nice, so.
Security.
Yeah, they had, they had, because of the way it's set up, they had a security guard, guard sitting just outside the door, and then they let you in, and then kind of stood along a wall and waited for a turn, and then they And then there was another security guard to let you out. So they had plenty of security.
There are a lot of regulations for that, that you actually, per the rules that are coming out, that you have to have certain entrance kind of wait areas and doors and doors and ID badges. I mean, you've got a lot of regulation by the state coming in to make sure people just aren't walking in the street able to pick something up and leave. You can't get through the exit door, I mean, there's a lot of regulations, if you want to look at those administrative rules, it's all in there. Security cameras, taping, a lot of regulations are being required.
I have a question, Tom, then, do you think, this is my train of thought, maybe I'm the only one, but what we're going through, I know it's medical right now, but I'm just thinking, it will be recreational, so almost like a universal, like when we're writing this ordinance, I almost want like a universal one that is going to work not only for medical marijuana, but also recreational. Because eventually, like you even said, they kind of tie together, right? They might start off doing medical, but when recreational comes in, that's where the money's going to be, and they're going to, right?
Yep, well, to the point of it being too restrictive, because then you can't even have a medical place here.
Right.
And it's, so one of the things that I've been kind of thinking about is the, the whole thing about the churches. Why? Why can't they be near a church? Is it because when you go to church, you don't want your kids to see the dispensary sign? I mean, it, it's that those original ordinances that were written for not having any alcohol sales near churches were 60 years ago. It was before there was the internet. I mean, kids see worse on their phone on the way to church than the church itself. So, and the other thing that didn't happen whenever is churches weren't in strip malls. I mean, as a person who owns a retail center, if, I get into how hard it is to afford to build a building nowadays with, with Brandon rent, when Sioux Falls pricing, when it comes to building the building. But if I had like a, not necessarily dispensary, because I don't think I'm even allowed to have that with my current leases, but like a testing facility, they, all, like this type of people have to pay above market rent. So I would love to have a testing facility go in next door, if I could build that second building, go in next door. They're going to pay above market rent, they're not, they're not going to be a parking hog, and they're going to, it'll be successful. So, I mean, that, I'd have no problem with it at all, but that's just me. But I have a church right behind me that I don't own that building, that wasn't my decision. And if you talk about 1,000 feet, I have a church on the other side of, of the, the gas station, the Casey's, that would also restrict me. So, I mean, just, that's just me being, you know, from a business owner standpoint, that's, you know, don't, obviously don't make any decisions based on that one person. But that's just something I've thought through, so. But yes, the schools, absolutely. No, I mean, daycares, yeah, don't, you know, don't want to be near, near daycares. But I just have, I have an issue with the churches regulating that, even the alcohol thing, but that's probably unpopular.
We got a lot of work still to do in a short period of time, so appreciate your input.
Yep.
I think we'll just proceed cautiously and
Like I said, if you have any suggestions or things you like or don't like or want to see, let us know, preferably this week. And then that would give us a week, or Lisa, a week to draft something for the next council meeting.
Yep.
So, so the state could turn down a license, have they told us what the criteria is? We know what that criteria is.
They're in the draft rules. They outline their process for denying a license, and they also outline the process for if we issue, if we set a limit of five and we get eight applications, they've got a process as to who gets the five for us. So, but once again, these are all draft rules, nothing's formal yet. So, you know, I, I don't think it's going to happen, but we could come up with the greatest ordinance in the world and the state could just shoot it out of the sky if they change something.
One, one last thing, has the state indicated at all how they are going to tax it, charge for it? If municipalities can tax it? Maybe a sales tax, a third penny tax? Cannabis tax?
I don't see this as a big tax revenue, I would say it's not taxed.
They're not going to allow for it?
I haven't said that it's not going to be taxed.
That was a concern at the meeting always, you know, Tim, that tax was not there.
Remember, our fees are not to be tax generators, so we're not setting our application fees, our, our licensing fees, our renewal fees to raise money. The way you have fees is to make sure we're able to handle it in force and inspect and those kinds of things, but.
It's not a tax revenue.
I would say we continue reading through, I, I've read through a lot of it. Man, it's interestingly confusing, but, you know.
I would not anticipate this, I think the state will levy its own cannabis tax.
I would agree with that.
And they won't allow us to, to levy our own.
Well, and it's unfortunate, because, you know, we as a city, we as a county, we're the ones that are going to pay the price in terms of social issues that do arise, police issues that do arise, it's, they're, they're real things. But let's, let's, let's just see what happens and keep, do our due diligence to do it right.
So as soon as you can get your comments to me, the, the better, and then I'll get them over to Lisa, and we can incorporate those in the draft.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would like to get something to you early next week.
Sounds good. All right, let's move on to administration, we have a block party request.
Something a little easier than cannabis?
Pardon?
Something a little easier.
Yeah.
All of the folks in the affected area have signed off on the application.
I see they have.
Motion to approve.
Motion second to approve the block party application, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a VFW request to be allowed to do a raffle.
Yep, no, unless you want to deny it, I did draft a resolution to deny the license, so I'm assuming we can just
We don't have to vote?
No action whatsoever.
Okay.
Only if you want to deny it.
No, we're good. American Rescue Plan Act 2021 Financial Assistant Agreement.
Why do you laugh?
Uh, yeah, because Brian's making me talk. These are
Fifty-some pages of, of rules.
Yeah, these are requirements, honestly, just to get the American Rescue Plan funds. So they set them, the feds gave them to us, basically, we put our name in there, we approve them, that's the first step to get our money. Or will be the first step when we get our money. Brandon's allocation is 1.8 million. The first half would be received this year, and the second half, 12 months after the first payment. The state is still working on their website or their portal. I actually looked today, and the state of South Dakota has actually not received their funds yet from the feds. I don't even think they've requested it from the feds, so I don't know that I see us probably, probably not getting it this month because they have 30 days, and they can actually extend that to another 30 days to get it out to everybody. So I think they're probably waiting until they get the portal set up, and then they'll probably request their money. But it's the financial assistance agreement and the assurances of compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act that we need for approval.
So are we going to get it someday, you think?
Sure.
Sure.
We'll get it.
Don't spend it yet, man.
Nope.
So there's nothing there we need to do?
Yeah, need to take action to approve the agreement and the civil rights stuff.
Motion and a second to
And the civil rights.
To approve the financial, financial assistant agreement. So we do have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's get back to these block parties.
All of, all of the affected properties have signed the, the application.
Motion and a second to approve the block party, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. First reading ordinance number 634 Rainwater Utility Ordinance.
This is the rainwater utility fee we've been talking about for some time. We worked, been working with A2S, working for a few. On the fee, they've helped us with the ordinance as well. This is really the first step in creating that fee, you have to have the ordinance in place before you can charge. So we are looking, I think, between four and a half and five right now for residential. And then for commercial, since they use impervious and they're, they have larger parking lots and different things, they're on kind of a different calculation, and those will be billed through the property taxes, and the residential will be on the monthly utility bill. So we'll get some monthly revenue coming in, which will be nice, and then we'll get a large payment in like April and then November for the commercial ones.
So then what, what would, what will we use the money for, the maintenance?
Well, it'll be maintenance, it'll be any storm drainage projects that we have. For instance, next year, we're slated in the big soup drainage project. We won't have enough funds to do that, so we're using our general funds, but those will be projects that we can use this fund for in the future.
Do you have an idea of what we can generate a year?
Next year, we're looking at 400,000, and then we'll kind of gradually increase that, like we do our water sewer rates. Can you be any more specific on the commercial properties, what we're committing to for those, how that's being calculated? How can you speak to that, Timmy?
So we're going to have to look at each individual site and look at their impervious area versus pervious area, because some of those, like in the industrial park, they really don't have any grass, so all of that water runs off. Other places, say like Marmont Energy, they have their own detention system. And so there are some little credits kind of put in there for those larger customers. It's really based off of the average lot size in Brandon, and so it's very comparable to what our residential homeowners will pay. But then they do have some opportunities for some credits there, say they put in a rain garden or something, then we can give them some credit back, because they put in some of their own infrastructure to help with some of ours.
It won't be the four to five dollars a month for the commercial, because it's based on square foot, inch of impervious surface. So A2S actually has to go in and look at aerials, basically every commercial industrial property, determine what the multiplying factor is on that parcel compared to a residential lot.
So typically with this, though, too, I know we have never had to do it, because we're not over 10,000, right? So my understanding is something that we have to do as we reach over 10,000?
We don't, we don't have to implement the fee, but we do have new regulations with stormwater.
Yeah, and it makes sense. So do we plan on putting a letter together, maybe the month before it shows up on the bills, so there's some awareness?
Yep, we'll, we'll put an explanation out, probably in the utility bills. We're looking at starting this effective January 1st, so if we could get it out into the November, December billing period as a flyer, explaining what the new charge is, explaining what it's going to be used for.
Yeah, perfect, I like that.
We, we do have a communication plan kind of put together with Facebook posts and mailings and everything else for it, so it shouldn't be a surprise.
You guys probably will still get calls, but just try to be a little more proactive, that hopefully someone will call.
When is A2S anticipated to have their factoring done? I guess I'm a little hesitant without like being able to know what impact it's going to have on commercial properties. Well, this ordinance just gets, this ordinance doesn't have any fees in it, that's all done by resolution. So all this ordinance does is allow us, allows us to charge it. And then the resolution on the fees and the rates will come forward to you probably the first meeting in September.
And we will work with all those businesses, because everyone's is going to be a little bit different. And then they can submit a request for more of a review to me, to where we go through it and see what they can do to improve if they think that theirs is too high. So that is part of the ordinance, too, is that review.
Sounds good, I just want us to do our due diligence and not blindside a business with, oh, by the way, $7,000, this is due tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you. The last thing we want to do is, you know, put a burden on pretty valuable businesses, so I like that. So is there anything tonight, Brian?
Yeah, we need to have a motion to approve.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to, on the first reading of ordinance 634, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Hall needs a little paint. We talked about this, you know, Thursday.
Yes, the back looks pretty bad. Current color's terrible, and it's peeling and bubbling and all that, too, so it needs a, a paint job. I did reach out, well, I got two quotes back, but I did reach out to several others, and I didn't get anything back from them. 360 Painting and Select Painting both quoted. I'm recommending 360 Painting, they have a little more experience. They said that they've worked with similar buildings with similar issues that they've seen. They are going to do an actual extra step of fall prep. They actually recommend doing the fall prep and then letting it sit over the winter, because then they tend to see more peeling come and happen, so then they can wash it, wash it and wash it and scrape it again in the spring, so they can get as much off as they can before they paint it. And then we are changing colors, so I'd probably recommend just doing two coats, that way it sure, it covers it good. So I'd recommend the proposal and agreement with 360 Painting for two coats at the 18,243,89.
So you said you want, this one is higher, so you wanted to do this one because they have more experience?
They have more experience with working with the black and the stucco and the bubbles and all of that. So they have more experience on that, and they're going to do a little more prep work. I guess in the future, I would ask to see both bids, because it says we got two, but we're only looking at one.
A motion and a second to approve the 360 painting of City Hall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Anybody want to volunteer for a paint color?
Well, I got to be honest, I think the prep part of this is the key. And if you don't get old, old stuff you're dealing with, and if you don't prep it right, you won't be happy for the Resolution number 1621 Tax Increment District Number Six and Develop.
Yep, this is the, this is the potential TIF district that the Development Foundation proposed at the last meeting or two meetings ago. Making a new TIF district, TIF district number six in the Corson Industrial Park. This is for the expansion of an existing facility. It's a $300,000 grant. The Development Foundation is doing the work, they're up fronting the money to the, the company, and then they will receive those tax increments that are generated over the next theoretically 20 years, but it should be less than that, it should be, I think, about 10, and the debt should be paid. So, once again, we are acting as a, as a conduit for the increase in increment for the property. There's no risk to the city if the building does not get built for some reason. We do not owe anything on the, on the project. But it would appear that the company is, is planning to expand here in Brandon versus all of their other locations throughout the country.
Good.
It's all very good company.
So we need to approve this?
Correct this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have another budget work session next Monday, the night at 5:30.
That works for everybody again?
Yep. LIP Grant Application Hague Construction Project.
Yep, this is the Hague Construction Encore Park out west of the funeral home, between the funeral home and Excel Energy Property that we talked about a couple of meetings ago. Council approved a grant application for a DOT grant. Hague Construction has approached us and didn't want to proceed with that one, they would prefer to proceed with two LIP grants. One for, in essence, south of railroad tracks and one north of railroad tracks at a future date. It's at the very beginning of the process, so all, all I'm looking for tonight from the council is authorization to continue working with Hague on the, on the on the, on the submission of an application that would come in front of the council in the, in the future.
I say yes.
Yep.
Yes, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the continued work with Hague on the project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Streets, street report is there. We have a tree branch drop-off October 2nd.
Yep, from nine to three, operated the same way that we've been the last couple. You know, we'll charge a fee, the fees are listed there, those haven't changed. It's, uh, down at the old wastewater pond site.
Agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for Joint Repair Project.
We are currently working on a joint repair project for Holly Boulevard and Aspen Boulevard. Um, if you've noticed, Split Rock Boulevard also has some issues. And with these last, uh, this last week, these temperatures being really high, they had a couple more blowouts. They are having a really hard time finding a concrete contractor to come in and do the work, plus they have to go through the formal bid, so they don't have time to have somebody come in and fix. And so this agreement allows our contractor to go out there and do the work, and then we would pay the upfront costs and the state would reimburse us. So it's a way to get all of the roads fixed back up. They are a little bit behind. I told them Holly Boulevard is first priority to get that done before school starts, and then they'll probably move to Split Rock.
Makes sense to me. A motion and a second to approve the, uh, agreement with the South Dakota Transportation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fourth Avenue Overlay Quote.
This is a quote from Seal Pros to do a two-inch overlay on Fourth Avenue. Again, this is just gonna be a Band-Aid fix for the road until we can get there with the core area reconstruction. It's not going to be perfect. They will asphalt over the curb line a little bit, so they'll tie into the driveways the best they can. They will mill some of those intersections, but they won't mill driveways. And then they, hopefully, they can do the work here right away. Like in the next couple of weeks.
Wow, so Tammy, are you gonna get a letter to those residents, just giving them a heads up that we know it is a Band-Aid fix, but at least it'll be smoother roads until?
Right, I am gonna write a letter. Christina put together all the addresses already, and then we'll also do door hangers before they do the work.
What was the estimated time that this will last? No, like, like the product will last like a few years, or we're thinking until the full repair. Okay.
Is there a lot of heavy-duty traffic in that area? I would think you'd.
No, the, the, the heaviest traffic is probably gonna be school buses.
Yeah.
Which can be relatively heavy compared to a semi, believe it or not.
But I'm thinking it'll, it, we should get, I think to Tammy's point, the five, three to five.
Yeah, normal residential traffic is all these streets are subjected to. As, as far as timing, they may get to it this week, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we, you know, we can't guarantee that we're gonna get a letter out by the time they start.
But door hangers, maybe?
Yep, door hangers.
Door hangers, for sure.
And, and that stuff, but I didn't want to leave the illusion that we're gonna let her out before they start paving. And it could be this week. They'd actually said tomorrow.
They wanted to do it tomorrow if it was approved tonight. I told them that wasn't gonna work because we need to get door hangers out, and, but the letter will go out regardless, just saying that it's a Band-Aid fix, really. It's not permanent, and we'll get there.
But what if, um, they've got a car parked down the street and we're not, they don't, you know, they're out of town or something?
We typically, what we've done in the Slurry Seal projects, we just tour them around the corner.
And we don't charge?
No.
We don't charge them?
Nope.
Motion and a second to approve the Fourth Avenue Overlay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have on the water tower, a project change order on the, the lettering or inscription, anyway.
Right, this is the, the original bid set that we sent out. The logo is only eight feet tall. This would make it about sixteen feet tall. So it's an extra $23,342.
It's a big water tower, you're gonna see it from the interstate. If you want to see it.
I'd make a motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second to approve the change order. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need new business, Brian?
Just a, a couple of things. I received notices today from the South Dakota Municipal Rivers Company Fund and South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. Uh, if any of you are interested in becoming a board member, they have the elections in October. So if you're interested, let me know, and then the city council has to have a resolution of endorsement.
How long are the terms?
Um.
Three years.
It doesn't, I think it's three years. I can look, but. Anybody's interested, let me know.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a need for executive session? Okay. Well.
Motion to adjourn, right?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming.